The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, May 21st, 7:00 PM. If you'll all please stand for the pledge and councilwoman Maranke will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add the following onto your new business. I'd like number five tax refunds to become number six. And the new number five would be a resolution regarding energy-efficient LED lighting projects.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. We do not have a presentation or public hearing tonight, so I'll ask for an approval of the minutes of the May 7th, 2018 regular meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept the minutes of May 7th, 2018, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Announcements or reports? Do we have any announcements to make?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just one of the groups, which on the Liaison Committee on Aging, had their meeting during the past two weeks. And just one of the events I wanted to highlight was they once again hosted statewide conference on grandparents raising grandchildren, totally grant-funded. People came from throughout the state and it was once again a tremendous success and also a program that fills a real need.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody want to add? I'd like to mention that a few of us yesterday attended the opening of the new Plainville Funeral Home. It's a locally-owned funeral home. Most of the work that was done was by local contractors, architects, and that sort of thing. So I'd like to say it's a beautiful facility. And the owner Andrea was very gracious and had a lovely reception for those that came. And I'd like to wish her all the best because new businesses in town are certainly welcome. And she's done an awful lot of work to create a beautiful space for her business. So it was very well done yesterday. There are no other reports? We'll go on to appointments and resignations. Do we have any resignations? I think we do.
I have two. Actually, one to point. Motion to appoint Ian Andrews, 72 Anderson Avenue, Bristol, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I'd also like to make a motion to accept with regret the resignations of probationary firefighters, Lissa Little and Danielle Novogue from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Are there any appointments tonight? Nothing? We have a report for the Board of Education tonight? I do.
Hi, Andrea Saunders, 55, Fonder. I have a few items, so bear with me. It's a busy time. Let's see, over the past week, there have been bears spotted near Tofflon Middle School and the PHS campuses. But in each of those instances, the administrators acted quickly to make sure that the student safety was obviously the utmost importance. And we just wanted to thank the Plainville Police Department because they've been very supporting securing our campuses and, you know, after we sighted the bear. So we appreciate that. This past Saturday, the Plainville's fifth annual Family Fun Fest occurred over at Linden. And usually the event is held outside of Linden, but due to the rain, they were able at the last minute to move it inside so that it was still very successful. And they had over 1,200 families attended. And this event promotes all of our school district programs such as Adult Ed and the Family Resource Center, as well as having many local vendors. Dr. Brummett's been in contact with Representative Pettit Ricard to a new bill that was passed by both the House and the Senate and also signed by the governor. It's bill number 551-71, which prevents the governor from making any mid-year rescissions to a town's ECS grant after it's been awarded. So we're happy and relieved of that. So hopefully we won't have any more mid-year cuts like we have the past couple of years. The Board of Education has signed in relation to the state insurance plan. We signed memorandums of understandings with all of our unions. And so we'll all be moving to the state plan. And the Board of Ed did approve that at last Monday night's meeting. The only little sidebar in that is that the teachers' union, which the contract was supposed to be negotiated this summer, their president had requested of Dr. Brummett that we extend it one year, which we did approve. And so we gave a modest increase and everything will be moved to next summer. So the contract will be extended one year and be negotiated in the summer of 2019. In addition, Dr. Brummett wanted me to make note that over the next few weeks, we'll be having our enrollment meetings for all of the employees so that they can change over to the new plan. Let's see, tomorrow night at the Aquaturf, we have our annual super senior banquet. This event is a great event because it recognizes students that have no disciplinary infractions on their records for as long as they've attended Plainville High School. So it's a great event just to honor kids that are good students. So it's usually all the board and administration attends. And I should note too that that is not paid for by the schools. They do fundraise and get grants, so it's all paid for outside of the school district. Graduation is set for June 20th. As usual, we always plan on having it outside on the turf field, weather permitting. Obviously, if it rains, we will then move it inside the gymnasium. So with the Wheeler School renovation starting this summer, Dr. Brummett wanted, even though she's already put messages out to parents, she wanted me to reiterate that the Wheeler Elementary School pre-K program for the next two years will be moved over to Linden Street School. So if any parents have any questions or concern, they can certainly contact the superintendent's office and she will speak with them. And then last but not least, this isn't Board of Ed related, but I just wanted to let everybody know and be reminded that on June 9th, from 10:00 to 3:00 PM at Robertson Airport, is the seventh annual Plainville Wings and Wheels. It's our flying and car show. And it benefits the Plainville Food Pantry and the Pettit Family Foundation equally. So I just wanted to remind people to come out. We're trying to get new cars, new events, new things for kids. So it's usually a great day for everybody. That's all I got. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
What's the increase for the teachers? We said we're going to extend the contract, but there's an increase.
Yeah. I have the letter.
Do you know what that is?
I do. So, let's see, there's a 1% general wage increase for the steps 1 through 14, for bachelors, steps 1 through 14, and for masters, masters plus, and the six-year steps 1 through 15. And then a 2.25 general wage increase for the maximum steps. And then I believe the amount that they pay for their employee premium cost share is staying, remaining the same at 16.5%. So that is not increasing.
Okay.
All right? Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Report of the town attorney, Attorney Mastriani. Do you have anything to add tonight?
I do not for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Report of the town manager.
Thank you. Couple of items, first of which is Code Red presentation, Chief MacIntyre. Chief MacIntyre is here this evening to introduce a new crisis notification system to assist in communicating with Plainville residents. With your permission, I'd like to ask the chief to step forward and give a presentation.
Great.
Hey, good evening. Thanks for having me.
Chief.
So Code Red notification system was acquired several months ago through our existing budget and our technologies budget. I've kind of moved some money around and cobbled together some equipment that we can make last another year to get through this first year with Code Red. The impetus for this was we were involved in the statewide program with the system that the state has incorporated, but that's exceptionally limited. And here's what happened to us with the Everbridge system. We needed it and found that we were no longer on the contract with them. Now, that was a glitch somewhere between the state and us. And to be quite honest with you, it took three weeks to get a call back from Everbridge. So doing the cost-benefit analysis, I thought that it was important to bring a reliable notification system, town-wide, to the residents of the town. So went ahead and got involved with this. But what we did was we went one step further. We decided that we would have a robust system that could be used by the town manager's office for emergencies, for the civil preparedness manager, the fire marshal for emergencies. It could also be used on a somewhat limited basis for notifications, such as we heard some time back that people were putting flyers in mailboxes or whatever and that. That was frowned upon. We could now use a system like this to say we're going to be paving this entire area or choose a different route. So just to go into it a little bit for you to explain what it is, the overarching company is called OnSolve and the product that OnSolve sells is called Code Red. It's an emergency mass notification conveyance system. Simply put, I'm not going to follow the slides word for word, but what I will say to you is this, we can instantaneously reach out right now to over 7,800, what's called POTS phones, Plainville telephone systems. So those are already loaded into the system. OnSolve pays for that service to get those numbers and maintain them. But then what we do is we solicit subscribership. So myself and staff will be out to Senior Center and we'll be posting on our website. We'll be posting on our Facebook page how to sign up. It's free to the public to sign up and then the public could opt in and opt out as far as what type of messaging they want. So if they, you know, want to hear from the police department, they'll check the box. If they want to hear from about natural disasters, emergencies, flooding, you recall the snowstorm, the major snowstorm we had where we had wires hidden in the snow was Halloween and everyone was upset that we were canceling Halloween. Well, it was for good reason. There were powder lines that were still energized, hidden by the snow. And so this is something we would use that type of notification system for. It's currently being used across the country. You'll see Code Red as a little emblem or icon on people's Facebook pages or on their websites. It's a tried and true commodity. I researched a couple of communities in Connecticut and one in Rhode Island for their satisfaction with the program. Hugely satisfactory performance on Code Red's part. Instantaneous feedback to us as the actual implementer of the message. We have 24-hour, day, seven-day week coverage with the company. We can call and have them put out a message if we're remote in the field. Our dispatchers will be able to put out a message. You need to have a coded license to be able to put out a message. So this isn't something that just anyone can, in theory, hack into and send out an erroneous message. It's pretty well protected and has a very high level of security. So you're getting that message over text, email, social media, and mobile alerts. The little graphic over there is actually Plainville. And what that was meant to depict is that we can actually isolate a neighborhood with notification. The impetus for this for me was our school safety program. And as we pull everything together with our immediate response to any type of school intrusion scenarios, this is also an integral part of that system. And that was really the impetus for me to get involved with it. And then we went the two or three steps further to have other people be able to utilize it within the town government as well. But we'll be able to actually, just like you can on your touchscreen implements, spread that area out over certain streets, isolate streets, exclude certain homes, God forbid, barricaded suspect scenario where you have 1 through 3 Main Street, which is the targeted area. We eliminate them from getting the message that, hey, the cops are out here. But we let everybody else know shelter in place. We have a problem and we're trying to deal with it. Call if you see anything suspicious. So we know this will generate a certain amount of extra work for us, but I think it's very, very much well worth it for the community. So this is just a simple graphic. What basically happens is the little bald-headed guy there is not me. That sends out a message from the council, from police headquarters. So you can get that on the standard telephone, email, any of the other things, texts. There's our president's favorite conveyance down there, the little birdie Twitter. You can get it any number of ways on your mobile app. There's also an app that allows you to be a visitor coming through our community. Let's say we had a water or wind event. It would alert those subscribers that we have a major problem here. There's a flood in downtown Plainville. Avoid this, reroute here. So there's a lot of flexibility. It's a very, very robust system. So just some of the examples of what we'd be using if we're a chemical spill, it's God forbid, a tractor trailer, tanker rolls over with a chemical and we're trying to coordinate an area, have people either evacuate or shelter in place depending on what type of emergency it is. The calls go out, we isolate that area. Instantaneously, we're sending out the warning message. And then all of the standard natural disasters, the floods, the things like that. Some of the things that we've run into here in Plainville is we're going to open the shelter at the high school. How do we notify everyone? We will notify them via this. The shelter's open. Here's what you need to bring. Here's who you need to see when you get here. For law enforcement, this is huge for me, missing persons. As you know, we have a state by mandate on how we handle missing persons. So it's a very, very onerous policy of five, six pages long that we have to check the boxes on that policy as every other community in Connecticut has to, as it's a statewide policy. But this also helps us to show that continuing the effort, we'll be able to use this pipeline of information, get the word out. At-risk adults, the Alzheimer's patients, the dementia patients, this can help us with that. The wanted criminal alert, something very heinous. What I want to stress is we don't want to overuse this so people become desensitized to it and they just don't want to answer it. You know, there's some communities that have a boiled water alert every, you know, every week. And eventually you just hang, you know, you hang the phone up. You don't, you know, okay, it's a boiled water alert. So we've been boiling the water for two weeks and we're going to boil it another week. This is, this should be used for serious issues. Sex offender notifications, I put it up there because we're dabbling in it. We actually currently go and make it door-to-door notification pursuant to state statute when we have a sex offender move into an area. And I think that's a very, very valuable thing to do. We don't shy away from that in Plainville PD. I think the neighbors and the citizens appreciate that effort. Mass casualty incidents, obviously, that's another. And then there's the standard public health, public welfare type of issues, the drinking water, the flu pandemics. Let's hope not. If fire department gets involved, they talk with the fire chief, they're on board. The fire chiefs appreciate the idea. We've talked with the fire marshal. The town manager had a meeting at his office. We got all the stakeholders together and we talked about some of the possibilities with this and everybody is working towards using it to the best of their abilities. Public works, we talked about. Now, the internal staff notification is another little hidden benefit to this. If we needed all hands on deck, so to speak, we could put that call out in seconds and it would go to everyone's device. They would respond back where it says two-way communication, two-way messaging. The officers can then respond back to us and say, I'm responding. So in the event of a large-scale incident, we're prepared. This is really one additional piece in a 2018 approach to policing that I think is very essential. Yes, it is. It is costly. It's $6,000 a year to have this. But a camera in the cruiser is $7,500. Mobile data unit in the cruisers, $5,000, $6,000. So these things are all very, very expensive. This is one that we bring to the community and it's for the welfare of the community. I think it's a must-have. We're in a three-year contract to do this. I will find a way to continue to bring it because I think it's that important to the community. Roswell. All right. So just basic information that we've already gone over. It's designed to keep citizens informed and aware no matter where they are. There's apps that allow you to pass through town and pick up emergency notifications. There's thousands of people on it, but the key to this is subscribership. And we will be reaching out. Sometime in June, we're doing the Senior Center. Anyone who calls us, they'll have identified people such as Al Orso or Dave Poseidon. One of the computer savvy guys will walk people through it. Or actually, what we've done in the past with programs like this, when we got involved initially with Everbridge, was we had people come right to the station for a little seminar. So it's a part, extension of our community-oriented policing philosophy. We actually get together with people in the Robert Holton Room and put it on their phones for them if they're not savvy in this area. Well, there we are. Any questions?
When are we going to roll it out? Chief, did you say June?
Well, we, town manager, I agree that all of you should go before we sort of pop these things out. So, you know, this was our kickoff right here tonight to, you know, let you know that we've been working on this and we'll get it out within the end of the week. We'll start our solicitation for subscribership. And so all of you are welcome to give us a call and get on. And the audience, of course, is welcome to, any citizen, just give us a call. If you have difficulty for the first couple of days because I'm starting to get other people involved in being able to put the app together for residents, they could just call me directly and I'll make that happen.
Okay. So do we have any questions for the chief?
Madam Program? I have one question.
Yep.
So Chief, if we have a bad storm and some of the towers go down, what's the fix for that if we can't, if we don't have the service?
Well, oftentimes, oftentimes, if you have the, what's called the Plainville telephone, that service is generally still up and running.
Right.
All right. If the internet, if the cabling for internet goes down, that would be likely, that's unusual, but you're getting it through email. So you would select, if you want to cover your bases, you'd select your hardline phone, your cell phone, your email. And, you know, let's hope that with that series of redundancies, the message is going to get through.
Okay.
But you are correct. I mean, it's not completely infallible if we have that sort of total blackout, you know, then we're back, we're back to going through neighborhoods on the public address system, notifying people of emergencies. Most likely though, your email is definitely going to work. We've seen very few occasions where even with that infrastructure hanging in a foot of water, it still conveys the information.
So you're not limited to what you pick? You can pick everything that applies?
Absolutely. It is so flexible and it's so robust. You could take all of it. You could take one piece of it. You picked that as the consumer.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Chief.
Any other questions for the chief? Sounds good.
Madam Chair, if I could indulge you with one other item?
Sure.
So we recently selected Plainville's first school resource officer. And that is after a competitive testing between the two candidates, they went through supplying us with a letter of interest, a resume, and then a full oral board with members of the school administration, the town manager, and my two lieutenants on it. I moderated the oral board and also several members of the Board of Education were in attendance to oversee how the process went. And we had two excellent candidates. They both performed really well. But Officer Jessica Martins was selected overwhelmingly as our school resource officer. She's very excited, very energetic. Both officers brought a lot of energy to the table and they're both high-performing officers. Jessica, I think, is going to really grasp this program. She has so much to offer. And we have so much cooperation with the high school principal, Roberto Matic. He's worked with her on cases. They've had kind of an impromptu interaction on some high-impact issues. So he's confident that she can go, do well. The superintendent's confident as well. So, you know, just, I just want to also say that what a great experience to collaborate with everyone, to gain everyone's support, to really put this together. I think this is a big milestone for the town. And I think that all of you on the council, as well as the citizenry, will see that this is a worthwhile and important program. So thank you. And we'll get started on that program now that we've made the formal announcement.
Congratulations to her from us.
Thank you.
It's wonderful. Now, there she'll begin training, there'll be some training that'll happen first before she...
That's correct. There's several formal training courses, ones for the National Association of School Resource Officers, or NASRO. That's a one-week school. And then there's additional classes that will select that fit her role in Plainville. So there's additional training after that. We're also sending her to the Dear School because we want her to get some familiarity with the fifth graders or the lower grades in town. So she's got training, a lot of training cut out for her through the summer months. And we hope to be, we will be in the school at the beginning of the year.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
I have a couple of other items as well. Next one I have is a memorandum of understanding for 349, 361, and 376 New Britain Avenue. The Economic Development Agency is recommending a MOU that would provide a future tax abatement to property currently being developed at 349, 361, and 376 New Britain Avenue, also known as the Chum Property. The proposed abatement would be 50% of the improvements for a period of five years with potential annual extensions up to three additional years on approval of the town council. Currently, improvements are being made to 349 New Britain Avenue with a proposed, with two proposed buildings. One is a 17,000-square-foot retail building and a 12,000-square-foot speculative commercial building. The total cost of these three buildings is estimated at $3 million. The improvements to 361 and 367 New Britain Avenue will consist of at least a 10,000-square-foot speculative commercial building or several buildings totaling the same square footage at an estimated cost of $1.4 million. There is an item in our new business regarding this recommendation to consider an MOU with 311 NB Plainville LLC and JVW Enterprises LLC as recommended by the Economic Development Agency. Reason why there's two of them is because they're technically owned by two, the parcels are owned by two separate LLCs. All right. Next item I have is a donation of land from Oakland Developers. Oakland Developers of Plainville is offering to donate a 3.28-acre parcel to the town. The parcel is part of a larger one located on the west side of Ledge Road near the Southington border. The parcel is being offered, the parcel that is being offered abuts town-owned land to the west and state land, otherwise known as Sunset Park, to the north. The land mostly consists of steep slopes and is not developable. The town council wishes to consider accepting this parcel from Oakland Developers. The next step is refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an 8-24 referral. And there is an item in our new business regarding the 8-24 referral. Our next item I have is another donation of land from the Roger Tofflon Estate of Connecticut Sandstone. The Tofflon Estate is offering to donate to the town three parcels of land located along the Poughkeepsie River near Northwest Drive Bridge. The three parcels total approximately 35 acres and are adjacent to other town-owned property. The acquisition of these parcels would provide a significant wildlife corridor through the northern portion of Plainville. And I provided you with a map showing the parcels that the town owns currently, as well as how these three parcels would match up with that. The town council again wishes to consider accepting this parcel from the, parcels from the Roger Tofflon Estate. The next step would be also to refer this to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an 8-24 referral. And there is an item in our new business regarding that referral. Next item I have is the mill rate discussion. The state budget has been finalized and the net result is that state aid to Plainville was reduced by $4,419 from what was originally anticipated when the town council recommended their budget to the all-day vote held on April 24th. At that time, the town council was estimating that the mill rate would increase by 0.41 mills to 33.84. The slight reduction in revenues would result in a mill rate of 33.846, which would, by sum, would be rounded to 33.85. This is a 0.42-mill increase or a 1.25% increase in taxes. There is an item in our new business regarding the mill rate for fiscal year 19. Next item I have is the Plainville-Southington Health District, which is an update. The Health District was formed about six years ago. Recently, the town of Middlefield has expressed interest in joining the district. Shane Lockwood, director of Health for the district, has been working as the interim Health Director for Middlefield and is very familiar with their operation and their needs. It's currently estimated that the services provided to Middlefield would result in a net increase to revenues of approximately $30,000 per year. That would mean that after expenses and the revenues that they would pay, that the district would actually end up with $30,000 more than they would otherwise have in their budget. The district Board of Health, which I am a member, recently voted to accept Middlefield as the third member, subject to a positive vote by the Middlefield Town Meeting. They have to have the town meeting approve that. And if it is, if this is approved, they would join the district beginning on July 1st. No action is required by the town council, it's just updating you on this particular change to the Health District. Next item I have is the Water Purge Control Phosphorus Upgrade Project bid results. Last Thursday, five bids were received for the Water Purge Control Phosphorus Upgrade project. The low bid was submitted by Daniel O'Connell's Sons of Holyoke, Massachusetts, in the amount of $11,164,000. This is approximately $330,000 less than the engineer's estimate for the project, and it's even further less than what was estimated originally as part of the referendum. it's even further less than what was estimated originally as part of the referendum. The bids will be reviewed by the Capital Projects Building Committee and then forwarded to the town council for consideration. The recommendation will be based on their determination, their being the, the Capital Projects Building Committee determination of the lowest qualified bidder. This recommendation is expected to be presented to the town council at their June 4th meeting. I believe I sent you a, a summary of all the bids, so you could see who bided, and we actually had a second bidder who was under the, the engineer's estimate as well. Next item I have is the EverSource Energies Opportunity Program Proposal. This is an addition, and, and thank you for adding that to the agenda this evening. Last fall, the town council made an additional appropriation for some energy improvements at various town and school buildings. The energy improvements included replacing the boilers at the middle school and to install LED lighting at the high school, Lindon Street School, firehouse, library, municipal center, police station, and senior center. All of the progress has been completed except the high school and the Lindon Street School, which are partially completed. The rebates have been received. Some of the rebates were used to finance the cost of the LED lights to lower the operating budgets going forward. About $200,000 of the rebates will go back into the general fund. One remaining item is a taxable government obligation contract, which is the document that details the financing of the LED purchase for the high school and Lindon projects. There is an item in the new business that would authorize the town manager to execute the taxable government obligations contract with EMCOR Credit Corporation. We're going to be financing some of the improvements of, you know, of the projects at Lindon and the high school over, over a 48-month period, so, in order for us to take advantage of that no-interest financing requires a resolution, a resolution to be approved by the town council. And that's on your agenda this evening, as well as the, that was the addition to the agenda. But this was something that we did discuss last fall as far as providing those concerns. Next item I have is the financial dashboard, covering the period through April 30th. This was included in your information package for this evening's meeting and has been posted on the town website, I think it was posted last Friday. I'd like to turn, turn this portion of the meeting over to Scott Colby, who will review the financial dashboard as well as give his report on happenings in town as well. So, Scott, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Scott. The first item I'll report on is the financial dashboard, and I'll go over the expenditures through April 30th. The town budget overall, we've spent 76.58%, which is 4.46% less than our two-year average. On the general government side, we've expended about $21.7 million out of the $24.7 million budget. This equates to 88.14%, which is 1.15% over our two-year average. The board of ed budget is coming in at $24.3 million out of the $35.5 million budget, which equates to 68.54%, which is only 0.45% over the two-year average. Looking at the hauler tonnages, we are going over slightly by 152 tons. Our two-year average comes in at about 4,100. And moving on to overtime, looking at the police overtime, they have a budgeted amount of $450,000. We are over the budgeted amount, but under our two-year average right now through April 30th. Police overtime is coming in at $462,000. This equates to 102.87%. The two-year average is 125.66%. Looking at the roadways overtime, they are 87.19% spent on their $70,000 budget. This is 64.53% less than the two-year average, and a lot of that comes to the Northwest Drive project that kind of skews those numbers up from a few years ago. Looking at the buildings and grounds overtime, they are coming in at 100 point, 103.14% out of the two-year average of 107.49. They are slightly over their budgeted amount currently by $544. Moving on to the roadway snow overtime, which hopefully we shouldn't be seeing any more snow storms, they are over the budgeted amount, but under the two-year average by 24.9%. They spent 131.91% to date. And the buildings and grounds snow overtime, they spent 99.47% and their two-year average is 101.6%. So this is 2.13% under the two-year average. Moving on to the revenues for the town, looking at all revenues, we're coming in at 57.6 million out of a, expected revenues of 59.5. This equates to 96.81%. Our two-year average is 99.48%. This comes in at 2.67% less than our two-year average, and this is due to the higher tax base as well as the loss of revenue from the state. Looking at the current taxes, we're coming in at 99.09%. Our two-year average is 99.84%, so we're under our two-year average by 0.75%. Also, this equates to the higher tax base. Looking at the unassigned fund balance, we're currently sitting at about 7.6 million or 13.1%. And this includes the additional appropriation that was made back in mid-April. Looking at the special funds for the town, moving on to recreation for expenditures, they've spent 80.63%. Their two-year average is 77.46%. Recreation revenues are coming in at 70.4%. They are under 3.47% of their two-year average, which is 73.9%. Moving on to the Robinson Airport budget expenditures, they have spent 174.36%. Their two-year average is 165, so this is a little bit over, and this is due to the apron design, some of the consulting fees. The revenues for the airport, right now, they have a fund balance of $413,423. They've received 73.95%. Their two-year average is 80.96%, so they're slightly under that. That's due to some of the, the grants coming in just high end. Moving on to the water pollution control, they have spent 87.01%. The two-year average is 82.15%. They're slightly over that by four, 4.86%. The revenues on the water pollution control side, 98.21% have been received, the two-year average is 102.31, so they're slightly under that right now by 4.1%. And the Plainville Library expenditures are coming in at 83.54% spent to date, and the two-year average is 89.1%, so they're slightly under that by 5.47%. And the revenues at the library are coming in at 97.93%, while the two-year average is 98.28%, so they're, they're just under that slightly, less than half a percent. Moving on to the health insurance fund, we have received the claims for the month of April. Our expected claims are $487,662, and we came in at $684,718, which is 197, $197,656 Moving on to the major projects, I'm just going to report on the ones that had some expenditures that went out in the month of April. For the park improvement fund, $7,000 were spent in April, this covered some gates over at Norton Park. The project is currently sitting at 63.76% completion. Over on to the turf field project, $2,000 were expended in the month of April to cover some legal fees. The road mon project, as it's been moving along, they, the project was budgeted for $5 million currently. They've expended about $3.2 million for the month of April, they spent about $4,500. For the phosphorus removal project, they spent $203 on a small invoice. Over at the Wheeler School, there was some encumbrances that were removed, which is why there's a negative that you see there for $89,000. And the parking lot project had some expenditures made for $17,000 to cover some design costs. And the new one that's been added is the Northwest Drive Rehabilitation Project, in that we have a budgeted project amount of $928,45, we've currently expended to date $406. That includes the financial dashboard, and the next item I have is the happenings. Moving on to the historical society, due to last week's storms, they rescheduled the event Connecticut Civilian Conservation Corps Camps, History, Memories, and Legacy with author Marty Podscotch on Thursday, May 31st at 7:00 PM, and that'll be held at the Plainville Historic Center. Come learn about these civilian conservation corps and the programs that they provided and the work to thousands of young men during the Great Depression of the 1930s, many of them here in Connecticut. The Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development has once again joined cities and towns around the country by sponsoring a campaign to prevent underage drinking. This effort highlights the fact that it is illegal to allow consumption of alcohol behind anyone under the age of 21, even in private homes. This is known as the social host law. During the upcoming prom graduation and summer party season, the coalition will be displaying lawn signs and other materials that highlight this message as part of the underage drinking prevention program around, campaign around town. The coalition is looking for PHS parents and other residents to display the lawn signs in support of the underage drinking campaign between May 15th and July 15th. If you're interested in displaying a lawn sign, please contact Coalition Co-Chairs Roberta Brown at 860-793-0221, extension 261, or Lynn Davis at 860-793-3220, extension 6111. Moving on to the senior center, they're having an advanced drawing workshop that's going to be held Wednesday, May 30th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. If you want to improve your skill in drawing, come join artist Becca Faziano as she guides you through new techniques. This is an intermediate, advanced-level class. There is a $5 class fee, which includes paper and materials. And they're also hosting a class on understanding Parkinson's Disease, Tuesday, June 5th at 1:00 PM. Gain a broader understanding of the symptoms, treatment, and management of Parkinson's disease presented by Kathleen McGuire, RN IntraHealthcare. This program is free, please call the senior center to register. And moving on to the town clerk, June is dog licensing month. Owners are asked to check with their vets for updated gravy certificates and encouraged to make appointments before the end of May if necessary. Reminders will be sent out May 31st. For any questions, please contact the town clerk's office. And there will be a referendum on June 19th at the Plainville Firehouse from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the acquisition of two fire trucks. Absentee ballots are available in the town clerk's office for eligible voters. And moving on to public works, bulk pickup will not be collected this Monday due to the holiday from Memorial Day. It will be collected the following Monday and runs through June 25th. And then the fall collection dates are September 10th through October 29th, all on Mondays. Eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup. When calling, you'll need to provide your name, address, phone number, and a complete description of the items to be collected. All calls placed by 3:00 PM on Friday will be scheduled for collection on Monday, and if there is a high volume of collection on that Monday, they will continue collection on the Tuesday. We ask that individuals place their items curbside no more than 24 hours prior to their scheduled pickup, and we ask that bulk items must not block or create a safety concern on the sidewalks or walkways. And the other item I have is residents should be aware that Northwest Drive from Perrin Road to the westerly approach of the Poughkeepsie River Bridge will be under construction beginning on or after May 29th and continuing until mid-July. Motorists can expect delays from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM during weekdays and are urged to use alternative routes. And that's all I have to report on.
Thanks, Scott. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the town manager's report or for Scott's report?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question regarding this mill rate. What is the impact if we don't change, I, I mean, it's $4,000, Robert, so what's the impact if we don't raise the mill rate to this 33.8?
Madam.
Okay, so why are we doing it?
You haven't done anything yet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You may ask your fellow council members that question.
Okay.
It calculates out to the, to the, you know, .01 higher, that's all.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, I wanted to address, direct this question toward a staff. In terms of the three parcels from the Roger Tofflon Estate, is there any concern about any possible environmental issues on those three parcels?
I know that Mark Devo has done some research on this, and he is, feels comfortable that there isn't that, and I know he's had some conversations with Mike Mashtrani as well, but with your permission, I'd like to ask...
Please.
Mark, you're still here, right?
Sure.
Ask him to step up and give his recommendation, and Mike might want to open as well as with the consultation.
Hello.
Hi, Mark.
Okay, so there were four parcels in total, three to the north, with the, make up the 35 acres or 28 acres, whatever it is. Pardon me. The, the only activity that ever occurred on those three parcels that I could find using aerial photography back to 1934 or '38 was the construction of Northwest Drive. So the parcels are within the floodplain, there are very minimal uplands associated with them. They serve primarily as a continuation of the habitat that the town is sort of building along the Poughkeepsie River riparian buffer to, to maintain those, those areas in their, in their as pristine as possible conditions. So I feel very confident that, with the exception of the construction of Northwest Drive and the bridge that was installed over the, with the Poughkeepsie, there's been no development activity with those, those parcels. No removal of excav, no excavations, no, no construction activities whatsoever. There's an additional parcel that we're looking into a little further because there may have been some activity there.
And we're only addressing those three tonight.
Correct. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Any other questions?
Robert, I just have a question regarding the webpage, the home, the homepage for our website. Can we put a banner on there in the next whatever week or 10 days or whatever, reminding people about the referendum on June 19th, where they can vote during which hours? Have it prominently displayed so people go to our webpage for some other issue, they'll be reminded that that's going to be taking place, whatever, whatever appropriate timeframe you think is, will work for that.
Absolutely, and we're also mailing an explanatory text, which will give, you know, somewhat self-explanatory, give some explanation as to the, the referendum, as well as the date and the time and, you know, where you can vote, those kinds of things. That's going to be mailed about two weeks before the referendum. So the first week of June is what we targeted, I had some conversation with the, with the town clerk earlier today, so, before it goes out. Probably around the first week of June, maybe Tuesday or Wednesday, which would be two weeks before the referendum.
And I have one more question regarding the donation of land from Oakland Developer and Roger Tofflon. Is there any significant financial impact to the town taking those on as open space as opposed to having them taxable property?
Well, the, the Oak Land Developers offer is a portion of land that's, you know, that, you know, has not, you know, hasn't been a separate parcel. It has, it has no frontage on a road, it's excess land, it really can't be developed. I asked the assessor to take a look at, you know, if that was a separate parcel, what would the value of it be, or what would be the value of it if it was attached to a larger parcel? You know, she estimated it would be maybe $80 a year in taxes.
Oh, okay.
Very minimal.
So that's fairly inconsequential.
Well, in my opinion, yes.
Good to know.
With regards to the three parcels, these are, these are parcels that I think the, the annual taxes on one parcel was somewhere in the 220 range, $220. On another one, it was $450 a year, and on the third one, it was, it was around $800 a year. I will tell you that, that taxes haven't been paid on those parcels in probably, one, I think, is eight years taxes haven't been paid, and the other one is 10 years. At some point in time, we would foreclose on the property, we would have to go through a legal process, we would have to pay attorneys to do that, and, you know, so, so them donate or giving it to the town is, is probably saving us money than we would otherwise, you know, have to do. The taxes aren't going to be paid on the property. So, so rather than go through the legal process that property owners is asking, is willing to donate to town, normally, normally we would take that if it was, it was a parcel that we felt had some contamination on it, we would, we would stay away from it. So this is, this is one where we're going to get it sooner or later, unless we just leave it out there to just sit there and limbo. I don't think that's a good thing to do either.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. Thank you for your report, both of you. Moving on to public comments, during this time of our meeting, we welcome the public to come to the podium. Please state your name and address, you'll have three minutes to speak to the council. I do have a list that has begun. Once we go through this list, we'll certainly open up... Once we go through this list, we'll certainly open it up to anybody that wishes to speak. John, you're at the top of the list.
John Kislik, 65 Forest Avenue. As all of you must know, Robert Mercer passed away on May 11th. For the last five months or so, every time I talked to him, he wanted to make it to a council meeting and aviation commission meeting. He just couldn't, he was too sick. So at his funeral, I talked to his daughter Christina, I told her I would like to bring him here with me, which I did, and speak a little about him, and she thought it was a good idea and he would like it. First of all, Robert was a very important member of our Citizens and Property Owners Association. He was one of the members who were instrumental in actually getting the town council convinced to film this portion of the meeting. So he's going to really be missed by us. On his aviation commission, I mean, you have a man who was at him at 87 years old. As an active member, I feel very important to the aviation commission with all this aviation knowledge, experience, and constantly looking for ways to upgrade the airport and, you know, just his general input and his concern for aviation. I think the aviation commission is going to miss him too, his input and knowledge. And that's about all I have to say on that, but I also would like to personally and from Rose, his wife, and Christina's daughter, thank the Town Manager and the Chairman of the Aviation Commission meeting for peering at his services at the funeral home. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Candace Hall, 113 Shuttle Meadow Road. I would like to talk about the fact that homeowners are leaving trash out in front of their homes, and it seems that it can stay there for days on end. I don't know when it is picked up or even if they arrange to pick it up, but it makes, I think, the town street look really trashy, like we don't care about how things look. There was one incident on East Street where stuff was just piled up. I don't know if it was a result of spring cleaning or what it was, but and it was -- it had been in the rain and just looked very, very bad. And as someone who was living next door to the rental property owned by a politically connected person in the town and had to put up with the lawn not being taken care of, just an awful, awful thing. I'm very conscious of how things look. The other thing, we just learned that the employees of the Board of Education will receive a raise. I thought that was usually handled by negotiations, and I was surprised that it would -- to hear that it was just announced.
It's a teacher's, not all the employees, it's a teachers' union.
Okay, then the teachers' union, so was that negotiated? How does that happen?
I believe that was an agreement between the superintendent and the teachers' union.
So the superintendent has --
The Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
Okay, so the Board of Education and teachers' union negotiated, or it was?
Yeah, they negotiated.
Oh.
They did get together and speak, and they came up with an agreement.
And is that -- does that have to be approved by the town council?
Sure does.
It's not a new contract.
It's an extension to the existing contract.
Okay, well, I was just very surprised that that was allowable. Thank you.
You're welcome. There's nobody else that has signed up on the list, but if anybody else wished to speak to the council that has not spoken, please raise your hand. You'll have three minutes. Yes, sir.
The town should not be in the business of taking land that developers cannot develop and take off the property roll. That's clearly all it is for one of them. It's undeveloped land, he bought it, developed the good part, now he's trying to dump the bad part of the town. Don't take it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not, does so? Yes, Catherine.
Catherine Labella, 50 Pierce Street. I want to talk tonight about something that I've seen on Facebook over the past couple of days that has really disturbed me. It has to do with a parent who reached out to other parents, asking them whether they would want to hear if their child was being bullied, because her child is being bullied. And there are well over 100 responses at this point in time, with parents saying, some parents saying yes, some, you know, whatever, but there are also some confirmation from other parents about bullying in the school system, as well as some concerns about what I can only describe as hyper-sexualized behavior on the part of a child in one of the schools. No, I'm not, you know, there were no children's names mentioned, et cetera. But I'm wondering whether, one, I know we have a Board of Education person here tonight, and if I could ask a question with your permission. I'm wondering if whether somebody on the Board of Education does monitor Facebook for these things, and the other thing I'm wondering is what kind of programs do we have in place in town for parents of children who feel like their children are being bullied, bullying? So if I can ask that question.
Okay, I'll certainly leave it up to the chair.
If she wants to speak to me, I'll be happy to speak to her after the meeting.
Okay.
Oh, not on the radio.
If you're interested, you can meet with Mrs. Saunders after the meeting, and she can give you some information about programs they have.
I think that's fine, and I'm glad to meet with you after the meeting, but I also think that people who hear this or are watching this on TV need to hear, get some sort of response if there's something available in town.
And I understand that. I think that in order to give really a comprehensive answer publicly, there should probably be some discussion with other board members, if not with the superintendent, as to what their programs are. Some things on Facebook can be, you know, they can be sometimes not totally accurate, if I can say that, and sometimes a little bit blown out of proportion. So I think those are good questions, certainly, and I'm sure the board would be glad to answer them fully.
Kathy, the Board of Education meetings are televised as well, and I'm sure the chair would probably have this as a discussion piece at their next meeting, so it will be broadcast.
And perhaps it can be added to their next agenda item as a point of discussion, so.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else wish to speak if they have so?
Lou Frango, 10 Furbank Street. Before I start, I'd like to compliment Mr. Kislik in bringing up Mr. Mercer's name and how much Mr. Mercer did for the town, and may also say, and I've talked to him quite a few times, his love of the town of Plankville and his love of Robertson Airfield.
He did indeed enjoy that work, and he'd like to share his stories with us as well, so he will be missed.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. Just as a quick one, thanks to our Town Manager, Scott, I did get a copy of the financial dashboard. I had a problem with my computer. The only reason I'm bringing this up is it was mentioned it was on the website, that I never found. No, if you could do a double check, but I never found it there.
I'll double check.
I just couldn't print the period, so maybe it's something that's on my end. If you could check it, appreciate it. Thank you. The chief is still here. The question I have in this is just general information. The resource officer, is that a permanent station? In other words, she reports to work at 8 and whatever the timeframes are, and that's home for her? Okay. Or is, in this case, the young lady? So, okay, just general information.
She will rotate through the schools, but she'll primarily be in the high school.
That's a focus.
Primarily be in the high school, but there'll be plenty of time that she will be at the middle school as well, as well as the elementary schools.
Yes. All I meant was, do you have other police duties that this individual's responsible? But the primary is, it's going to be the resource. That's all I wanted.
Except for the summertime when school is off.
Well, thank you. What else did I have? Number two, oh, the other thing on this Code Red, trying to understand Code Red. Just so I have an understanding of this, the code computer system we have for the town of Plankville, which I think is excellent, by the way, you sign up for the certain meetings, and when meetings are showing up, automatically it shows up on my computer. Will that also hold, is that how you're going, will that be one of the ways that Code Red will be loaded?
Yes, you could sign up for email notices as well.
So if there's an emergency, snow or something, the button is hit, because my name is there, or a resident's name as asked for, will automatically get it. Thank you.
And it could be text as well. Text on your phone if you prefer that. Or you could have both.
Well, I just, like I said, I really appreciate the way the system works now for agendas, et cetera, et cetera, and I was wondering if it guided to that. And the last, but not least, you know, being the cynic that I am, this donation of land thing, it just doesn't, why are you giving up land? And then compounded, and I understand the logic behind it, this particular owner owns the town of Plankville money, and it seems to be a smart way to giving out of it. And I'm sorry to be so blunt, but...
Well, if people don't pay their taxes over a period of time, they can walk away from the land. People can walk away from owning the land and not paying taxes if they're not, you know, and they can't sell the land, they can just walk away from it. And it sits there, owned by them, but it really doesn't mean that we collect our taxes ever, unless the property transfers.
Well, the only thing, if I may, this is not to pin anybody into a corner, the only question I ask, I think you said it was something like six or eight years?
Yeah.
Why didn't the town pursue it sooner?
We can, we could foreclose on the property, go through a legal process, and then we own it.
Earlier than this?
We could, I mean, that's what we could. They won't, we usually wait a little longer, but I mean, you know, it's expensive. It's not that, they don't owe that much money, I mean, you know, over time, you know, the fees add up over a period of time, the 18%, but you can collect, according to state statute, you collect taxes up to 15 years. Once you go beyond 15 years, the 16th year drops out, so you can only accumulate taxes over 15 years. So the town's not in danger, so to speak, of losing any potential taxes on a transfer of land until it gets beyond 15 years.
All right, and just clear my mind, there's nothing that the town, now that we have inherited the land, there's no work necessary by the town of Plankville?
That's correct, they just signed it over.
Help, you know, whether some damages of the property, et cetera. In other words, we don't have to bring public workpeople in there to work at anything, it's just laying there.
That's correct.
Thank you.
There may be other parcels of land where there may be a requirement along those lines, but not with these four parcels, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. I'm so glad John came up to here to say something about Robert Mercer. I'm going to forgo the prayer to say, I hope Robert rests in peace, and I know it'll be in heaven, because he was a wonderful man, a great citizen, and this town should miss him. Very smart guy, too. And we'll let it go as far as that's concerned. Amen. Rest in peace, Robert. This donation of land, it sounds to me like it has something to do maybe with the proposed trail. Am I right or wrong?
No.
I know that everything's been pretty quiet lately about the trail. It's been too quiet, and I'd like to know kind of what's going on, because all of a sudden, it's going to go boom, we're going to get hit with it, they're going to start digging their shovels, and it's not going to be very nice. What I propose, and you really, really should start thinking about it, Pan Alignment C. Alignment D, first of all, Route 10, to go to the left on Northwest Drive to Route 10 seems to be a much better idea, a much cheaper idea, because you won't have to build bridges and you won't have to dig tunnels, and I think it's a much smarter idea. And you bypass all the, and yet you still go buy a lot of commercials, they want to eat their pieces of pizza and get their bottles of water. They got plenty of places on Route 10 to do it. That's all I heard over at that March whatever meeting, and it was so silly. And they, if they don't want to go down, can't go down Route 10 because of the state or whatever, Alignment D makes a lot of sense on the far edge of the industrial park. There seems to be no reason why that trail has, can't go down the side of that back part of the industrial park, rather than go through front yards or back yards of houses in the middle of streets. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense that it has to be so invasive and intrusive to come into the town, yet by going down Route 10 or using Alignment D, they'll still be able to come towards the town, but it won't be bothering people's houses. But I don't know, it just, you've got to think about these things, and the trash problem is going to be a huge problem. It's already been noted that there's a lot of trash that's been left in Farmington, and I'm sure many, many cities and towns all up and down the coast, wherever that stupid trail is going to be and is. So that's my take.
Thanks, Joanne. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not spoken yet? Hi, Gail.
First of all, I was thinking of the people that come here. When I was up in Evergreen, South Windsor shopping, and there was a group of mostly shepherds, and they were so well-train, and I was thinking of the dog park and how the people here would freak out. I was excited to see the ducks, but it just made me think, and nobody here in this town would allow them to, I'm talking mostly the citizens, wouldn't allow them to walk through the town. I mean, there's at least 10 or 15 ducks, they're gorgeous. That's all, that was just that one thing. But anyhow, in regards to the messy apartments, I would suggest that person I would suggest that person contact the landlords or the owners, because I live in an apartment, and I can't stand it either. And sometimes you have really bad maintenance people, and I'm considering calling my landlord and seeing if I can vacuum, because they don't take care of places inside either. If you think the outside's bad, you ought to come inside. And that's just a, you know, the only way you can get to the outside is by calling the property owners, really. So, and I think I know the area she's talking about is the best, and a lot of tenants are very messy and sloppy themselves. So, if I was her, I would call the property person, you know, myself, I would. But anyhow, let's see. Oh, one quick question. You did something a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was a couple of months ago, Connecticut, was the Fair Housing Act. Did you adopt it or something?
I'm not sure. Fair, did we do a fair housing resolution, Robert?
We did for small cities. We had a fair housing policy.
So, does that mean that I can take a dog in for medical reasons, if I need to?
They adopted it based upon state, you know, requirements. So, you know, I'm not sure, you know, you'd have to, I'd have to redraw our policy, but it basically ties into the state.
Okay, the state's that way, yeah.
Right. So, if the state fair housing policy says that, and I don't think it does, but if it says landlords, you know, have to accept animals under particular circumstances, then they have to abide that.
All right. I just want to ask, those little parcels, are they big enough for tiny houses?
No.
I want a tiny house.
They're not developable.
All right. Well, that's what I was hoping for. I love them. All right, thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Mr. Screen?
Good evening, Arthur Screen, 5 Cornell Street. I tried, I just couldn't do it. I couldn't sit there and not get up and talk.
We would be disappointed.
I just want to say that, along with John and the others who spoke about Mr. Mercer, I was honored to call him a friend. At his age, a lot of people that reach his age are reminiscing back to the past. Whenever I spoke to Mr. Mercer about Robinson Airport, he was always looking to the future and how to make that airport better and how to help the town do that. He was a great guy, and we're going to miss him a lot. As far as the parcels of land that are in consideration, just maybe Mr. Lee could confirm for me, are these parcels connected to, because you said they're connected to town-owned land, is that the AOD land that we purchased a few years back? I'm in full support of taking those properties. We're not, we're not going to get the tax money out of those properties. They're non-developable, but in conjunction with the 80-some-odd acres that we got from the AOD purchase and the FEMA thing with Robert Street Extension, they all connect together to make a natural corridor from basically Route 72, the northern side of Route 72, almost all the way out to the Farmington border, if these don't touch the-
Go right to the Farmington border.
All the way across for the natural habitat that we have, the animals and everything else. I think it's fantastic to do that. The Oakland Developers Site, on the other hand, you know, it's only $80, but how much did it cost those to light the room tonight to hold this meeting? That $80 can be used if the owners of Oakland Developers decide to continue paying taxes on what is of no use to the town of Plankville. So, if he's, you know, he bought it, he knew he couldn't develop on it, and now he wants to unload it. I think he's responsible for paying the taxes on it. I don't think we need it for anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not yet? Anybody else? Last chance. I will close public comment. Thank you for your contributions. Moving on. We have no old business, so we will move on to our new business portion of the meeting. May I have a motion for number one, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve and authorize a town manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with 311 N.B. Plankville LLC and J.B.W. Enterprise LLC as recommended by the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to submit an 824 referral to planning and zoning regarding a donation of 3.8 acres of land from Map Block Lot 44E10 located on Ledge Road, as outlined in letter dated May 11, 2018, from Attorney William Gelski regarding Oakland Developers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just wanted to point out that the action that you're considering this evening would just be referring us to the Planning and Zoning Commission to get feedback from them, where they would explain whether they feel that this is something that the town should take, you know, should take as an exception. So, you're not accepting the land, you're just referring it for a referral.
Thank you for that explanation.
Sure.
Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to submit an 824 referral to planning and zoning regarding a donation of three parcels of land totaling 33.9 acres, Map Block Lot 07A, 17A, 07A, 17A, and 08A35, located on and near Northwest Drive from Roger Tofflon Estate in Connecticut Stan and Stone.
And a second?
Second.
Again, this is the same consideration as the referrals of planning and zoning at this point. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just wanted to suggest, I know that a number of speakers have mentioned the land donations tonight, and in this one, in particular, and the other one as well, I think if they can, could access, and I'm sure the town staff would be very cooperative in making that available, they could access a visual of these parcels. I think it really does help the understanding of why we are considering accepting this land. It really does lead to like a real corridor of open space that'd be available for animal habitats. If you see it visually, I think it makes a lot more sense.
We can have that at our next meeting available, display. Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four.
Madam Chair, I'd like to skip number four, if that's all right with the rest of the town council.
You don't want to set the mill rate tonight?
I don't want to raise the mill rate. I think we should keep it at this 33.84 that it was.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to set the mill rate to 33.84 effective July 1, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. I'm going to vote against this, and the reason is that we have a very lean budget. We have, I think for the small amount of money we're talking about, we should round up, not round down, and so I will vote against it.
Any other comments?
I'd like to say something before you vote, if possible. I don't know if you're done talking with the council.
I'm sorry, can you speak back? I didn't-
I wanted to say something before you vote, that's all.
Yeah, well, please, please do.
If we don't set the mill rate at the council meeting, it's going to create an issue. Well, I mean, it's possible, but it's going to strain our staff in terms of trying to get things out in a timely fashion. So, I would ask, whatever you can do tonight, if you can get, you know, it's unfortunate that there's, you know, like five people here, but if one person votes against it, we're waiting, we're waiting till the next, that's correct.
That's correct.
So, you know, hopefully you can come to some type of agreement, because, you know, we, you know, if we're going to struggle, we can do it, but I mean, it's going to be a strain.
I don't, I appreciate your input, and I don't think $4,000 is going to make an effect one way or the other. I think we set a spending plan based on our original assumption for the mill rate. I would certainly vote with Councilman Wazurko's motion to pass that 33.84.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Can we get a consensus to do that, or, Mr. Saunders, do you wish to stay with yours?
The town manager has said that it would be minimal impact if we don't raise that, so.
It's just, I mean, the mill rate is an estimate of, you know, under perfect circumstances, you would raise $4,000, you know, $4,400 more. I can guarantee you that we're not going to collect exactly what we've budgeted, so.
Well, we're actually collecting a lot lower, if you look at the financial dashboard, we're all below.
I'm just saying, the difference in the mill rate between 33.84 and 33.85 is $4,400. And I can guarantee you, we're either going to collect a little bit more than that or a little bit less than that. We're not going to collect exactly what it said.
Or spend a little less. Or they can cut the hours a little.
All right, I'll go along with the 33.84.
Okay, so, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Let me just change that to 33.84. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Next.
Number five, motion to adopt a resolution entitled Obligor Resolution Regarding Energy-Efficient LED Lighting Projects for Plankville High School and Linden Street Elementary School.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five.
Number six, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds listed on the addendum minus the two items for 50, oh, West Broad Street.
I'll second that, and I'm sure we'll have an explanation for sure one day.
Well, just for those of you who don't understand, there's two tax refunds for my husband and me. They were on the previous meeting's agenda to approve, and we only had four votes, because I abstained. Now, tonight, if you take it back out again, Bob is not going to be happy, but I think we can live with that.
You would have to have stayed, correct. Yeah. We would only have four votes, so it would pass.
Madam Chair?
And town attorney's going to weigh in.
In my opinion, I think this is purely administrative, and I don't think you're looking for requesting or bestowing a benefit upon you as a taxpayer. Therefore, I don't think you have to abstain.
You overpaid. You deserve money.
We did overpay. It's just a red flag.
It is an administrative process. I mean, you're not benefiting from this. It's purely administrative.
Okay, amend my motion to add those two items back in.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional comments? Thank you for yours. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We, tonight.
The week will be easier, believe me. Mr. Lee, do we have any other discussions of interest tonight that you have for us?
I will just point out that on the bulky waste, people will leave it at the curb and don't call. I mean, we go through a process, and unfortunately, sometimes we can't get rid of it immediately. Sometimes we're not aware of it as soon as other people are, so I would encourage anybody who sees that type of situation, just call Municipal Center. We may be in the middle of already notifying them when people, you know, we just can't go out and pick it up, so to speak, immediately. So, sometimes it does take a little bit of time, but, you know, that's what my recommendation would be. You don't have to call the landlord, you can just call our office. We send out letters all the time with regards to this.
Okay.
Just, we just, unfortunately, we can't address it immediately. We can't, just take it away.
Okay, thank you.
Without a certain amount of time going by.
There are no other comments. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.